Good morning. Good morning. Now, I will now call to order the April 8th, 2024 regular meeting for the Public Safety Commission. Please roll, hold the roll.
Chair Cervantes.
Present.
Vice Chair Munoz. Commissioner Alseroff. Commissioner Donnelly. Commissioner G.
Present.
Commissioner Holgin.
Here.
Commissioner Lu.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, now let's go to the public comments. Are there, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, so in this case, there we'll have to move to item number two on the agenda. I would like to ask Chief Riddle to present this item.
Morning Commissioners. So this morning is just going to be a kind of an overview of our Community Emergency Response Team, the kind of history of it, the intent of it, as well as Map Your Neighborhood, and then our Public Works Director Ted Gerber is also here to go over a little bit on GIS and how that Geo- Geographical Information System kind of incorporates with fire and public safety and how there's opportunities to use that as well moving forward. So everyone kind of, this is, this is kind of the launching point of when the city kind of took a step back and realized that we probably were not prepared for, you know, everyone thought of earthquakes, everyone thought of brush fires. This windstorm in 2011, I was actually on duty for this windstorm, and it really took us in a whole another, in a whole different direction that we weren't prepared for. You know, we lost communication, we were, we were limited with our information coming in from dispatch, and you know, this, this taught us some lessons, and really, one of the biggest ones, so this, the aftermath of this was debris management, and you know, kind of what we started to look at was, we did not have a good grasp on who in our community was without certain resources and how were we going to communicate with them, how were we going to get teams out to check on them? And this really kind of started us thinking on moving forward with a CERT team and following other models in other cities, and we weren't the only ones. This windstorm caught everyone in the San Gabriel Valley off guard. So this was kind of the launching point for this discussion. And the CERT program was actually developed by Los Angeles City Fire Department in 1985, with the first team being completing its training in 1986 and coming into fruition. The FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, has now officially adopted this model as a national model for cities to use. Our program in this city started in March of 2014. At the time, the mayor, Robert Joe, allocated his discretionary funds of $5,000 to kind of launch the program. We established an administrative committee that was made up of myself, Captain Saxon, Janet Braun, Susan Kaplan, Bob VanderWaal, Dr. Harry Lieberman, and Ellen Daigle. And really, so when we launched the CERT, the big question for us was, are we going to able, as a small community, are we going to actually be able to create a CERT team? Or is this going to be a CERT program where we basically train and release our citizens back to their neighborhoods? So they would be better, better prepared to prepare for a disaster, respond to a disaster with their neighbors, and recover from that disaster. The discussion of an actual CERT team, we, we attempted to go there several times, and for some reasons that we'll talk about towards the end, we never really quite were able to check that box and actually having a CERT team. And really, one of the biggest factors in that is just the community, those that we were training really didn't have a desire to be part of an official team. But I will touch on how we've looked at opportunities and we've leveraged those who do want to be part of something more that they continue on, so, and, and what I mean by that is like the Spark, the South Pasadena Amateur Radio Club. That is a big part of our CERT program because that is going to enable us to communicate during a disaster. That's just a picture of our first graduating CERT class back in 2014. So the mission of the CERT program is to promote hazard identification and mitigation, an effort to minimize the effects of a disaster on our community and facilitate recovery. And again, really, it was to be able to prepare for, respond to, and recover from a potential disaster, and really talk about what, what threats are there to our community? You know, everyone, like we talked about, everyone focuses on earthquake, but there's, there's quite a few risks that could come to our community. Even, even a basic power outage for an extended amount of time can cause a lot of havoc to a community if that community is not ready to respond to it. So this is, I know this is kind of small print, but I'm going to kind of highlight some of this. You know, we talked about that, this, this training we do is basically, it's three days, four hours a day, and, and we really focus on some key areas. The first day really is spent talking about just how do we prepare for a disaster? What does that look like in your, in your household? What does that look like in your immediate neighborhood? You know, we, we talk about how to shut your gas off, we talk about how much water you should have, how much food, what type of food? You know, your family's communication plan, your family's exit plan, all these things that go into kind of preparing for a potential disaster. And this first day, really, we get, we get the most positive feedback out of this first day because you know, the initial concept of preparing for a disaster can be stressful. It, it can raise some anxiety levels in, in us, you know, and that's just, that's just a, a natural human response. But as we start to talk about ways that we can prepare, you know, the anxiety level starts to come down a little bit, and at the end of this CERT class, out of three weeks, we just touch on a lot of things, but at the end, that's our number one feedback, is that the anxiety level for the thought of responding and preparing for a disaster really diminishes in the household, and even with the children, when the parents are able to talk with the children about the plan they may have in the house now, you know, it goes a long way. So what, some of the areas that we cover, not only just preparing for the disaster, but we, we teach basic fire suppression. We, we actually put out real fire, we, we use it in a controlled, controlled pan, diesel, diesel fuel, and the, the participants get to put it out with an actual fire extinguisher. We go over actual techniques for disaster medical aid, how to give medical treatment to those that are injured during the disaster. That medical treatment looks a little different sometimes in a disaster mode, just because the resources may be limited. Fire department may not be responding to your house as quickly. So, so the techniques on, on treating injuries are a little different during disaster. We go over search and rescue techniques, where they actually do a, a drill at the end of this class, where they actually go through and search for victims in a, in a dark environment and, and extricate them from that area. Do a little bit of shoring up collapsed structures, cribbing, lifting heavy objects. So at the end of it, the participants kind of get a, a big overarching view of disaster preparedness, and like I said, being able to respond to and recover from that disaster. So our, our CERT training classes consist of three, three consecutive Saturdays. We actually have a class going on right now. The training is hosted at the fire station. Each day is approximately four hours in duration. We find these classes will actually go over that because the participants actually want to stay over a little bit and just ask additional questions that come up through the class. And to date, we've trained over 500 citizens. And out of that 500, you know, we still have quite, you know, I said we don't have an actual team, but, but these 500 or so that have been trained, they're still very much in contact with us, they still ask questions, they take the refresher classes. And that's really the, one of the biggest things that we want to remind the community is, these trainings are perishable skill sets, so it's really important that we continue as a community to promote this and, you know, and refresh ourselves on, on these techniques, because like I said, they are perishable skill sets, so you know, there's, you, you heard every October is the great shakeout. Every time we have a moderate size or a smaller earthquake, it's always a reminder of that fact, like, oh man, okay, when's the last time I've actually checked my supplies? How much water do I actually have? Did we eat the food that was designated for, you know, emergencies? So instead of waiting for that disaster, we just promote the fact that it's better just to keep it as an ongoing training topic. So these are just some pictures of some actual participants practicing fire extinguishment, and then on the left there, your right, that's a cribbing techniques, lifting and cribbing and removing a victim from a heavy object. This, this has become a really big component in our CERT program. So Map Your Neighborhood kind of, kind of developed out of a combination between, a partnership between CERT and Neighborhood Watch. And Map Your Neighborhood kind of is a in-between program. And Map Your Neighborhood was, was started in an, in an attempt to, as a community, leverage the resources that you have around you in your immediate neighborhood. Get to know your neighbors, find out what they do for a living, to the extent that people want to share that, right? We didn't want to be real intrusive, but you know, who has power saws? Who has different means of, who has medical training? So as, as a, as a, as a smaller block of the community, you would be able to better prepare for and respond to a disaster, because you could leverage those resources in your immediate neighborhood. So Map Your Neighborhood definitely has become a big part of this. If you look here, statistics show that 70% of all victims are rescued by other survivors in the disaster itself. So that's a, that's a key point, because we have six firefighters on duty every day. So the reality is, we have a significant event that affects the region. Chances are, fire is not going to be responding right away. We're going to be triaging the community and responding to emergencies as we can, but those notifications are going to start going out into an umbrella effect where we're going to be requesting county support, state support, federal support, and there's a time lag in getting all those in, so that statistic of 70% of the victims are rescued by, that's a reality, that's, that's a reality during a disaster. So some of the challenges we've had, staffing is always, has always been a challenge. We use on-duty shift personnel to, to provide the training. We, we basically, you know, train and release versus a formalized CERT team, I've kind of touched on that. But the on-duty shift personnel has probably been our biggest challenge so far. You know, LA City, these larger agencies, they have the luxury of having administrative staff assigned specifically to the CERT team and the CERT program, where we'll have rotating personnel, we have one person designated as a CERT coordinator. Their responsibility is to oversee the program on a year-round basis, and then coordinate the trainings and use on-duty resources to provide that training. And like I said, the train and release versus formalized CERT team, that's an ongoing discussion. I, I don't want to paint a picture that we will never look at the opportunity for a CERT team again, but you know, there's just some challenges that are, are associated with that. The funding, funding has never really been a challenge, to be honest with you. The city council, both past city council and current city council, take the, take the emergency preparedness very serious. Our current budget for the CERT program, just for the CERT program, is $5,000. We're proposing the same amount for next fiscal year, but our overall emergency preparedness budget is $55,000, and that covers funding to make sure that our city's emergency operation plan is, is current, which it is, that the city's local hazardous mitigation plan is current, which it is. Both those plans are federal, federally required for the city to be eligible for grant funds and reimbursement after a disaster. So those are very important to have. And then just that $55,000 also goes towards just maintaining our emergency operations center and making sure that, that that center's up to date, which, which it currently is. It's not a big footprint, that's actually in the fire station, but it has all the necessary communications and, and all the, all the, basically all the functions that are required for us to manage an incident the best we can in this city and be approved for, for reimbursement from the federal government. Just with funding, just to show you how important that is, the federal, the feds, FEMA, will, will never not give you money, right? If you, if you ask for money during a disaster and that disaster is declared a disaster by either the governor or the President of the United States, depending on the size of it, FEMA is automatically, you know, they're positioned to start giving cities millions of dollars for that recovery. The important thing is though, they are going to audit you, and if you're not doing certain things in that EOC, like you don't have a current emergency, city emergency operations plan, or a current local hazardous mitigation plan, they will seek that money back, they will request it back. So it's really important that we do everything by the book and we keep current on all this stuff. So opportunities and goals, this is, this is kind of what we look at on a continuous basis, just to make sure that we're leveraging every opportunity in, in the community to provide the best program we can. We provide three basic CERT classes a year, two refresher classes. Continue to foster community support, and, and that's really, really important. So this is something that we reach out and we will participate with faith-based organizations to talk about emergency preparedness and, and how the city can work alongside those. I'll, I'll give you an example, only on a church early on in the program was, you know, very active in their, in their emergency preparedness thought process, and you know, and, and some really good ideas came out of that, because the reality is during a disaster, a lot of citizens go to faith-based initially for, to seek resources. And whether or not they go to the church or not, that's just a statistic that, that really kind of drives, drives home that our faith-based throughout the city play a big part in, in recovery from a disaster. And to the extent that they can train their members in CERT and have a basic plan of what to do during a disaster, will go a long way. Emergency water for a large group of people, bedding if, 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 if they, if the opportunity presents itself. And then we do, currently, we partner with outside neighboring cities, their CERT programs, the city of Alhambra, city of San Marino, San Gabriel. We take some of their overflow, sometimes they will take some of ours when we have citizens that can't make it to our training dates. We can refer them over to those cities. The training is exactly the same, and that's the great thing about the CERT program, is you can be on vacation in another state and this training will, will, it's just a skill set, right? It's a skill set that'll follow you wherever you're at when the disaster, when the disaster actually happens. So I'm going to invite the Public Works Director up, Ted Gerber, just to talk a little bit about the GIS and how the GIS kind of plays into, you know, potential uses with public safety, and then obviously, we'll be happy to answer any questions together.
Morning Commissioners. Ted Gerber, thanks Chief Riddle for the introduction. So my understanding was that there was some interest in how GIS or geographic information systems could tie into CERT preparedness. Just a quick little overview, you're all familiar with GIS, you might not know it, but it's really just data, a, a database that's spatially available, so we can tag that data to a map. So if you've ever used, you know, Apple Maps or Google Earth, or you know, you've looked up when a store closes on one of those services, you click on it, and all the data is stored in the system associated with that location on the map. And so the, that's what GIS is. The city doesn't have a, necessarily a comprehensive GIS system. That's an enterprise-wide system that we all utilize, but each department may use it in their own way. So you know, as far as public safety goes, it might be part of the RMS system. I'll show you what, you know, Public Works uses it for. Even community development might use it as far as like tying information to particular parcels for development and planning purposes. So here you see like a simple description of what GIS is. This is just a map of all the parcels in South Pasadena. So you know, any, any single point of information or a, you know, a shape or a line, we can associate with this map, so like a fire hydrant, which we'll see, or a pipeline or a parcel. On the right here, you can see all the different types of data, and we basically call this layers. So we may layer in information about where certain demographics live in the city, like, you know, senior citizens, or there might be information that we want to show where you know, particular streets are large enough for emergency vehicles to, to pass through, or different routes that we would prefer emergency vehicles to go through. So that's your data on, that's the example of your data on the right. This is the city's actual GIS system, is what we use in Public Works. Again, like I said, it's not an enterprise system, but we have some information in there. This is a map of the city's domestic potable water system and all the fire hydrants associated with it. There's about 500 fire hydrants in the city. So with regard to, you know, emergency preparedness and the city's use of GIS systems, we are in a position to use this information to basically track the maintenance of these fire hydrants. We don't have that system online yet, but we have the data available to do it. So for example, we could implement a system where we are identifying the last time each of these fire hydrants was flushed and cleaned and exercised to make sure it's, it's readily available. We can use that to determine which of these pipelines has had the most breaks in a particular year and is a good candidate for replacement. Another thing that we do use this data for is modeling. For example, when a new development comes into town, we do a hydraulic model around that development to make sure that if there was a fire at that location, that there would be an adequate capacity of the fire hydrants that surround that location, and if not, we'd require that developer to actually upgrade the system nearby and add fire hydrants. So as, with regard to the community's opportunity for CERT, we don't have a tool like this, but there are tools available that the city could use, that, that a CERT team could use. For example, like you could use Google Maps, and you can develop your own maps in Google Maps, so you could identify which neighbor has, you know, a generator, which neighbor has, you know, lanterns, things like that. And so it's a really good tool, GIS in general, for identifying resources in your neighborhood, and like collectively gathering that information, and then communicating that with each other, so that everybody has access to a particular map. You can share that information and add to it and edit it. So you know, there's quite a lot of power in GIS. We're hoping to leverage that at the city level as we implement that. And then for the community, there's also, is also a resource as well. So happy to answer any questions you have at a high level about this. Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, I'm going to ask my questions first, if that's okay, because I have to leave for work. But in regards to GIS, I know that this is a system that we built from the ground up. Number one, is there any access to this particular interface by the citizens of our community, like the captain, the block captains? And number two, what about the more, I know that the costs of the more high-powered GIS systems, like the ones that LA County uses called ESRI, is, is the cost for something, a product like that prohibitive for our city because we are already limited on funds? So those are my two questions for you. And questions for the chief is, is it possible to recruit everybody who's graduated from the CERT program to recruit people to be on a committee so that we can enter data into our GIS system? And how many neighborhood, is there a Neighborhood Watch program for every single square block in the community that you know of? Is there a Neighborhood Watch staff member that, that's there to educate all the block captains? And can all the block captains be asked to come and enter in data from their neighborhood? Whoever wants to address my question first.
I'll start, and then I can also help with that question as well. So so the system you actually see up here, this is an ESRI system, it's ArcGIS. Now, there's many different levels of this. So we basically just have a system where we can house the data. We pay about 500 bucks a year just to put, have a place to put the data. Now, in order for us to add to the data and edit it and change it, it's a few thousand more dollars a year, and that's where we're headed right now, is to actually put more into the system. To actually have a comprehensive enterprise system where we can use the data, track maintenance, do things with, that's in the, the tens of thousand dollars range. We do have a CIP project that's budgeted by Water and Sewer Funds to implement something like that. We just haven't gotten to the point where we have enough staff resources to pull the trigger on something like this. And so to answer the question of whether that's publicly accessible at the moment, no, because right now, we just have a very small setup that we use for a few staff. The idea would be, once we went into that enterprise-wide system that we use internally for tracking, we could expose a component of that to the public. So what we're looking to do, for example, is, we don't, we don't track the condition of these hydrants in the system right now. The only thing we're starting to track is the condition of the streets in the city. And so we have like a heat map that shows like the red areas are the worst and the, you know, the green areas are better. And the idea is that we would like to open that up to the city, for, for the community to see like what streets are next in the program for improvement. We're not there yet, but that would be the initial phase of something like you're talking about. And so, you know, both those questions combined, it is expensive, but we do have budget for it. Leading into the public safety question, it, the system that we're implementing wouldn't be something that we'd be able to have the public contribute to. They would be able to view it and review the data and, you know, make decisions based on it, but it wouldn't be set up in such a way that people can edit it. It'd almost be like kind of opening up your website for people to sort of like add stuff to and change. The idea would be there would be a different resource, you know, CERT-driven, community-driven, because there's lots of tools out there that a community group could use to sort of map their neighborhood, as, as to say.
Or maybe just limiting it to the people who've been CERT certified and block captains that we ask to certify as well.
Well, so adding the GIS system isn't really a straightforward thing. You have to actually have skill sets and, and ESRI certifies people who are GIS professionals. Just to get that dot on the map is not just like funking it down, it's actually, you know, what we call creating a shape in the system, you have to like build in the attributes behind it. It's like part of a layer, and then you have to kind of present it as a map, so I'm, you know, I'm, it sounds a lot simpler. And in the tools that are available to the community, like, like Google Maps, they do make it easy, but as a part of our ESRI system, it's a lot more complicated as far as, you know, adding the data to it. So it might not necessarily be beneficial to provide, you know, access to like a block captain, for example, because there's a lot of components to actually developing something like this, yeah, of course.
From the public safety sector, and I'll talk specifically just about the police department, a couple of things. So the police department has ESRI as our GIS software. In and of itself, the, the raw files are encrypted, so unless someone had a reader, they could not access it, they could not read it. There are certain mapping or certain layers that we would make public, such as crime mapping, and you, most public sees that now. We, we release that both on a digital format as well as a printed format. And another hypothetically, you look at what we're going to talk about later today, which you have all seen the previous presentation on the, the RIPA data. That is of itself, when we're looking at the heat maps, or we're looking at certain other information based off of maps. That is essentially a GIS mapping system there, so. In terms of public safety, the police department could not utilize the public to import data and, and work on that because the Department of Justice and CLETS regulates that, so someone would have to be So someone would have to be certified through the Department of Justice before we would ever give them access. On top of that, there's also city policies that limit that. And the whole purpose of that is so we don't get corrupted data or access to data that is not not legally permissible to CERT people. So, so public safety as opposed to maybe Public Works or Planning is a little bit different. Additionally, with public safety, there's certain mapping projects that we would not release to the public as well. And that might be anything that involves an active investigation, anything that contains personal information of our residents. Hypothetically, if we were to map our vulnerable population, if it was a buy-in program where someone said, yes, please put me down for that. Certain data points like that, we, we wouldn't release. But anything that is publicly, you know, available for the good of the community, such as crime mapping, traffic collision mapping, those type of things. Absolutely, that, that stuff that we would, we would encourage people to become a part of and, and get to know your neighbors. So I think that, other than you asked a lot of questions, I'm trying to remember, back to the neighborhood watch. No, we do not have one for every block. There are certain blocks that are just smaller than others. I want to say at last count, we had 78. Gosh, no, I'm trying to think of the name. The program, Neighborhood Watch, thank you. Neighborhood Watch, different, different districts, which is quite a bit of them. We have one person that oversees that. He also does a number of other things, including crime prevention, Neighborhood Watch, community events, and also carries a caseload as a working detective. So he's pretty, pretty busy. But if anybody that's watching or any of the commissioners have any questions or want to get more information on that, we're certainly available and happy to come out and talk. So I think that covers it for the police department.
Yeah, I think there was just one more, one more to, to your question as far as have we, you know, rallied CERT graduates or Neighborhood Watch captains to actually gather that information and input it? So as Ted Gerber said, there may not be an opportunity as it stands right now to allow them to tap into the GIS and input that. But we do try and capture that information after every class. We promote it at all. You know, Richard Lee, who oversees the Neighborhood Watch, I believe it's still Richard Lee. You know, this is a discussion that we, we try and promote this with the specific groups within the city to keep that discussion going. Because that's the only, that's the best way to do it is just to get to know your neighbor, right? You break down those barriers, you build a little bit of trust. Cause not everybody wants to be an open book, right? Just, just, that's the day we live in. But there's still opportunities, just gather basic information about who's living in close proximity to you and how you can leverage those, those strengths and those skillsets during a disaster. Because during disasters, you, you find out real quick, you become friends with your neighbors. So it's an opportunity that's laying right there and we're always trying to promote it and find the best way to, you know, capture that information. And there may be an opportunity moving forward if we capture and, you know, and, and we're the ones delivering into the system. So as we move forward, that's still an opportunity to do even with the GIS system. Actually, that's for Neighborhood Watch. Do you have?
I was just going to say I'll contact you afterwards and we'll get you someone to let you know who your neighborhood captain is. And if you're interested, we'll get you all that information. So we're talking about two different things here, I think. So there's Neighborhood Watch, which is law enforcement-based and it's the neighborhood, and then there's the CERT training. As far as the, the Neighborhood Watch, happy to get you the information so you know who your block captain is, when and where your local meetings are. And then we'll, we'll get that to you after the meeting. And as far as CERT goes, I'll leave that.
Any additional questions for presentation? Or comments?
I, I, I want to make one comment, I think, on this, on the idea of capturing the data. And, and I know this is probably on your minds and probably on ours as well. But you know, to the extent that there is information that we gather from CERT members who may have access to resources or resources available at their location. I think for the city, for, for a city sanctioned program to publicize that information, even if it's opt-in.
Yep.
It's, I think there may be some liability there to the extent that, you know, it becomes no longer available, there's some inaccuracy to it. And also, you know, I, I think in an emergency, in a, in a disaster situation, you probably find yourself, you know, you may have a generator, for example, and you don't have, there's not, not another generator within three blocks or five blocks or 10 blocks. And you've got everybody coming over to one. So I feel like there's probably some mechanism to sort of limit the scope of it. I like the idea of making sure each neighborhood though, each sort of immediate vicinity knows what's available. But I think that's a nice.
No, that's an, that's an excellent point because, you know, there's two, there's, there's two sides to that. One, you mentioned potential liability, right? But the other side is, and that's kind of where, you know, we've just found that the best way is just to get to know your neighbors and that, and get a comfort level and a trust there. Because you're right. You know, there, that's actually a concern that's shared with us, that if, if one neighbor is really, really prepared with all these resources and no one else is taking it serious, well, you know, should they be solely responsible to take care of five households when they've prepared their own household? And that's just a common discussion that we have during the CERT, during the CERT. Like there's, there's a reluctance there to, to share this information. So, you know, point well taken.
Yes, also, however, I'm not talking about generators, but I am talking about one of the most important resources that we need during an emergency, and that is water. And I believe when it push comes to shove and if the water is not available, we have a myriad of swimming pools in the area. And from one of the trainings I had, I was told that even in the worst of cases, drinking swimming pool water was something you could do instead of just dying of thirst. So if, as you said, it is so very important to know your neighbors. Because I seriously doubted that in case of a necessity of water, if a swimming pool owner will run out of that water. There's plenty of water to be around, but the main thing is, I believe is communication, to know who your neighbors.
I mean, you mentioned water, that probably is the number one resource for the first few days. And for those who don't have it, it becomes a big, a big problem. And so, you know, we recommend during the class, three gallons of water per person per day. We don't recommend initially drinking pool water, right? But there's things that you can do, right? You can actually say, okay, how much water am I going to keep on for me and my family? Seven days at minimum is a good rule of thumb, just to prepare for the worst case scenario. And then the pool, filling up your bathtub, right? That's going to be a good resource for just bathing and hygiene and try and keep the, the water that's designated for drinking as drinking. And then again, you touched on the second part and that is just reaching out to get to know your neighbors. People have asked, how, how do we do that? I mean, I, I guess it's kind of neighborhood specific, but you know, we, we always show up to block parties when neighborhoods request block parties. And that's always a really good way just to kind of get your neighbors out in the street and barbecue and get to know them.
Chief, I have a couple of follow-ups from past meetings. I think this meeting, this was from a meeting from last year. With respect to Map Your Neighborhood program, I believe Commissioner G had brought up how labor intensive that was. But the Map Your Neighborhood, and she had, I think, believe, she had asked or someone had asked about, would that be something that the Eagle Scouts or Boy Scouts could help with, or is that just too labor intensive?
No, so that's, that's a great point. I was actually going to touch on that towards the closing of all of this. So leveraging with not only faith-based, but all the stakeholders in the city. So like tonight's a great example. We will be at a, an Eagle Scout presentation tonight, talking about opportunities that are there to have Eagle Scouts kind of join in this as part of their project. Is to, you know, help, either help promote programs that are specific to CERT, Map Your Neighborhood. You know, and there's a lot of opportunity there. And we've actually have done this already with, Oniana Church has been very active in this. And those are just segments of the city though, right? So in order to be effective, we need to branch this out. And, and to your point, the Eagle Scouts is a great opportunity. So again, we'll be meeting with them tonight. We've been getting little, little successes along the way and really no, no, really no big hurdles in all of this. So, you know, we're excited about where this goes because we always talk about three, four, 3.4 square miles. Those challenges we talked about, there's actually a lot of opportunity just based on the fact we're kind of smaller as a community and we can maneuver a little bit and get the information out in different ways. And a lot of times it's door-to-door, face-to-face.
And, and my second point is, I think you mentioned the 2011 windstorm. And that's, was the CERT program started after that critical incident?
It was started in 2014.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as, as you well know, these things are started after a critical incident occurs.
Yeah.
And you have to wait for the next one to see, is it working? Unless you do mock drills, if you're working in a big city, you're having critical incidents every week.
Yeah.
But has, there, there been an occasion since 2011 where the system was actually utilized or tested or like a fire in the hills or anything?
So because we don't have an actual team, we don't have a deployment model, right? So our, our measurement of success is a little different. And I would say, I would advocate that absolutely it's been successful because those 500 or so that we've trained, those are members of the community that are just more self-resilient during disaster. They have a skillset now that they don't necessarily need to overwhelm 911. And they've shared that with us. So during the, during the, you know, the, the pandemic was a huge example, right? Just being able to navigate some of the, all that, you know, protocols that were coming out of the pandemic and the stay-at-home orders. And we've had graduates come and say just that alone and, and having a mindset of having certain things in place for survival. The civil unrest that took place during that time, again, was, was a, it was a high tension time in everyone's community. And the feedback that came back of, okay, I, I get it now, right? It's, it's, that's, that's when you draw on these, these skillsets. So to answer your question, there hasn't been a real significant pinpoint event. But you know, during city functions, Fourth of July parade, things like that, they're, they're assisting us with the events of the day, handing out waters, things like that. But there has not been an actual EOC activation where we've implemented CERT. So.
Okay.
And they are instructed, even though we don't have an actual team, if there's a disaster, they know that they can, once their household is, is stabilized, they can report to the fire station. And we will put them in, in a secure area where we will start utilizing as we see fit.
Okay. And, and my third point was, in January, we talked about the GIS program. And one of the points was when the new commissioners came aboard was, I have a note here that we'd look to in the late spring, early summer, maybe having a demonstration for the Public Safety Commission again? Is that something that could be done in a couple of months down the road?
Demonstration of just the GIS or?
Presentation, I, I'm trying to read my notes from several months ago. Do you recall us discussing that?
Yeah, I mean, this, this really is kind of the follow-up discussion of, of introducing how GI, what GIS is and how it's currently being utilized and potential opportunities moving forward. But just to throw out the invitation again, to, you know, to this commission. In fact, on our badge pinning, this, this next weekend, there was a request to, you know, tour the EOC during that badge pinning event. So it's onsite, that's, this commission is always welcome to tour the EOC. Kind of, you know, stimulate more questions and, and just see where we're at as a city and how we're, how we plan to respond.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you Director Gerber for, for the great presentation, really appreciate it. First to you, Director, we saw the map of the hydrants. And I know we're talking about potentially having some maintenance data in there, but, but as it stands, we do have a map of where the hydrants are located. We talked a little bit about who has access to what. So my question to you is, is who has access to this hydrant map?
At the moment, just city staff have access to this hydrant map. At a microcosm level, developers might have access to a small area because we've asked them to, to change the water system there. But you know, largely, you know, this, as a, as an aggregate, this is publicly available because you can see it here. But getting into the details about exactly where the hydrant is, how it's connected, that type of thing is with the city staff.
And then to you, Chief, does, does fire have or need access to this?
Yeah, so actually on a different, so we actually, we get, we get this information from two points. We actually have it, we're dispatched through Verdugo Dispatch. I think Verdugo uses ESRI and Tableau. But we get it real time, when we get a dispatch on our computer aided screen, on our computer screen on the fire engine, we can see where the hydrants are located and have a pretty good idea of the GPM that's available out of that hydrant, what the pressures are, because they're color-coded. So we have that information currently through our CAD.
And do mutual aid agencies get that as well?
Yes, so all, every agency that's dispatched out of Verdugo, that's 13 agencies from the Burbank to Arcadia down to Montebello. We all have that same information coming in.
Great, thank you guys. A few more questions for you, for you, Chief. I know we talked about, we don't have necessarily a CERT team. We, we have the train and release model, but you did mention that possibly down the road, that is something that we have thought about exploring. Is there any infrastructure in place to contact the people who have graduated in the past? If we ever did go to a team model, or how would that team be comprised?
So, so currently, they are in a group, Connect South Pasadena, the mass communication. So only through that, so there's not a direct call-out method currently or just CERT members, right? So the Connect South Pasadena, the opt-in mass communication system, or if they subscribe with, opt-in with NICSOL through the police department, they would be notified of an emergency in the city. Chances are, if it was, if it was that substantial, they would be aware of it just by experiencing it. And so the only real call-out we have, because we don't have a team, is just to, like I said, report to the fire station and stand by for further instructions.
So there's no way, I guess, to, to reiterate that to them after they've graduated of, hey, don't forget, once your house is in order, come to us?
So, and again, this is direct feedback from the graduates, right? We really promote the whole concept of a formalized team. But we just find that almost 90, almost 100% of the graduates just want to be trained and, and they don't want to be part of an official team. And that's not uncommon, that's not really unique to South Pasadena. Other agencies can leverage larger numbers of people, so they could actually form a team. But even, even those larger agencies will tell you that the, it's such a, there's such a high turnover rate in, on those teams of, of whether they move out, move away from the area, or just decide at a later date that they're not interested in doing it anymore. So, you know, that, it's just, it's just one of those things that we try and, try and manage. And again, our view is if we're providing a skillset and they are a little more self-sufficient during a disaster, and for those who are available and can respond in and volunteer during a disaster, then we will utilize them as a team as well.
Thank you, Chief. And you mentioned- Thank you, Chief. And um, you mentioned the a cert coordinator.
Yes.
Is that a a sworn position or or an administrative support position who has other responsibilities or is that a full-time?
Yeah, no, he's a he's a fire engineer currently. It's assigned to one of our fire firefighter engineers. Um, and he receives five percent to oversee the cert program as well.
And the training's taking place at the at the fire station on on Saturdays. How does um, if if you were to receive a call during that time, how would that work?
So we usually use two to three um off duty. So they'll either hold over. Or if if the worst case scenario, we can take a a unit out of service while the training is going on and allow the other cities to um. Kind of uh provide a uh emergency response while we're training.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Director.
Yeah, uh, I have a few comments. Recently, I started to promote Neighborhood Watch on my neighborhood. I got a very positive feedback. I believe Neighborhood Watch will be the the foundation of many programs, third program. So I guess uh the third program will get well very welcome as well. We did you publish the schedule for the third program?
So we do publish it on the, it's on the city's website. Um, as far as when the classes are coming out. And like I said, we put them out usually every every three months. Um, the classes will come out and they're promoted on the city's website. And then we'll usually send out flyers and other notifications, you know, spread the word during events, things like that.
Okay, so my my street will have a kickoff uh for the Neighborhood Watch. Will this be part of the presentation from the? Uh, Officer Richard Lee?
Yeah, Richard Lee.
So he will present this third program as well.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, we work very closely with with Richard Lee. Um. You know, oftentimes he'll invite us to speak to the um the Neighborhood Watch groups uh a- at the meetings. And to your point, it's always a good partnership to spread the word about both programs at at each one of our events.
Yeah, definitely. When the officer comes to us, he's he's a very busy guy, I know. So uh as as much information can be provided to neighbors as possible, that would be the best. Right? I think uh definitely uh for the map your neighbors.
Yeah.
The 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 Neighborhood Watch will be the foundation.
Yeah, for sure.
Neighbor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chair Cervantes, we have a public comment. Uh, it's.
Hey, please.
For agenda item number two, Ivan LaRose.
Thank you for your generosity. Um, I, when I saw that uh cert. Was going to be on the agenda, I said, thought to myself, I must say some, express. How grateful I am that we have this program. I would like to see. That it is, the outreach is, it's it's. Participation is voluntary, but I would like to see the outreach be more inclusive. So that we are reaching out to those who are not only seniors, but those who have impairments. Because, just because you are over a certain demographic. Doesn't mean that you're useless. It means uh I personally, I developed a a major disability in nineteen ninety-two. And what I did was one uh, as I was trying to figure out what to do. I thought, what are your skills and what do you have to use in order to support yourself? And I evaluated the skill sets I had at that time. And marketed myself as a reader for those who have visual impairments. Stop and think about it. You may uh, there are those who have physical impairments. But they have other, they are a whole person. Uh, and and they have other skills and other awarenesses and other back additional background. That not everybody else has. They can be included as well as the seniors. Yeah, uh, we do not want people to be. Vegetables sitting on the side of the curb and being useless and saying, oh, help me, I'm so beautiful. When they could be part of the rescue effort. And lending either the supervisory skills they have or the verbal skills or the language skills. As well as uh putting forth efforts for for the the uh leveraging uh and 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 moving objects. We do not want to exclude those who are over a certain age. Or have impairments, vis- visual or non-visible. Because everyone is needed when a disaster is happening. Everyone is needed. Everyone has various skills and abilities. It's just not the standard that we take for granted. And I would like to encourage you to think about that. Think about that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now going into item number uh three. I would like to ask Chief Solinsky to present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Solinsky, Police Chief. Uh, the presentation to you before you today is going to be based on. Great, thank you. On a previous uh presentation that all of you had the opportunity to attend with City Council, this is going to be a continuation of that. Uh, I think the uh, at the council meeting, we got cut a little bit short, so I'm not going to go into the entire presentation that you already had, but just to recap. And then give everyone an opportunity uh to answer or ask any questions and get into a little bit more of a discussion. So the Racial and Identity Profiling Act was uh established in two thousand fifteen. Under Assembly Bill nine fifty-three by Governor Newsom. And in short, basically, what it said is that any detention uh by a peace officer, the peace officer had to identify with their perceived. Information about that individual that was stopped, be it uh race, gender, uh sexual orientation, age and disability. Uh, South Pasadena was part of Wave Four, which required South Pasadena to start collecting that information in uh twenty twenty-two. And then all that information over twenty twenty-two was turned into the Department of Justice in twenty twenty-three. That information was uh collected and put into a very collaborative report across the state. As as uh you may recall, Bob Scales from Police Strategies uh was here at City Council and the joint meeting and gave you an overview on the process and. And how that has worked. Uh, South Pasadena has adopted that uh in our policy. As you can see on the left-hand side is our policy uh which. Details bias-based policing. And then on the right is a sample of how the officers collect that data when they stop an individual. Uh, as I mentioned, there's, I want to say, five or six different uh data points that that officers are required to collect. However, South Pasadena collects. Over nineteen different data points. Uh, some of that is not only uh what is required, but we go above and beyond because we believe that the information is. Is valuable, so we want to look at different sets of data on how we collect, what we collect, where we collect it. Uh, to provide a not only a transparent view of what officers are doing, but also to provide more information so that we can look at. Are there certain trends, are there patterns uh based on that data collection so that we can identify either training needs, we can identify deficiencies? And we can also identify the the positive things that the officers are doing. So this is again, a little bit more about what the officers uh collect. After every stop, they there's a computer program. Uh, through Veritone that they go through and they collect uh the data. So information here is what is the individual's perceived race or ethnicity? On the other side, what's the primary reason for the stop? Is it consensual? Is it a crime? Is it a traffic violation? And so forth. And so as I mentioned, what the state requires law enforcement to do is collect information based on the perceived race or ethnicity of a person. The perceived gender. Whether or not that person uh is perceived to be a member of the L G B T community. The age, the the English proficiency of that person. Or any disabilities. And again, that's perceived. So that has, that is not verified information. They the state has asked that the officer has not verified that through documentation or or questioning of the individual, but just their initial perception. Obviously, with perception, there there are challenges because uh, you know, what someone identifies as or uh what their race nor or ethnicity is. It it, you know, there's a margin of error there. I had mentioned, we collect, South Pasadena collects over nineteen points. And it it is actually a total of twenty-one different points of information sets that we collect uh to determine. Patterns, practices and whatnot about the uh the information we are looking at. Going back to our demographics, this is based off of the the traffic stops over uh the last quarter. And as we look, uh, there's the ethnicity based off of the number of stops in South Pasadena. Based off the total population of South Pasadena, then we have L A County's population, the state and vice versa. So if we look at South Pasadena, twenty-five percent of all stops are in South Pasadena. Are those that are identified as white or Caucasian and actually, let me rephrase that, perceived as white or Caucasian. Forty-six percent are perceived as Hispanic, nine percent as black or African American. Uh, three percent as Middle Eastern, seventeen percent as Asian. So then you go across and you can see twenty-five percent of all stops are based. The officer's perception are believed to be white, where South Pasadena's population is thirty-nine point two percent. Uh, and so forth. And then here is the number of arrested suspects. So we had four hundred and nine arrests of those individuals that are. That are uh identify as white or Caucasian, which is a total of twenty-nine percent of all arrests in South Pasadena. Six hundred and twenty-three were Hispanic or Latino. That that equated to forty-four percent. Black or African American, we had seventy-five arrests, which are five percent of all arrests in South Pasadena. Thirty-four arrests are identify as other, which is two percent. And two hundred and sixty-two that identify as Asian or Pacific Islander. And that equates to nineteen percent, so a total of one thousand four hundred and three arrests. And again, that is in the the uh last quarter. Here is just a bar chart of basically the same information uh based on stops. Three thousand seventy-six stops, which, as you can imagine, not every stop is one individual. Sometimes there are multiple people in a stop. Uh, so it equated to three thousand four hundred and fifty-one subjects that were stopped. The perceived age, uh, we look, the the predominant age in this category was thirty to thirty-nine. Uh, with the uh under eighteen and sixty-plus were the the uh least amount identified. So. The two, the two categories that were identified the most is those between eighteen to twenty-nine and thirty to thirty-nine in that age group. And then the reason for the stop, a majority of the stops we encountered in the police department were moving violations, a two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight. And the the uh least amount of uh those people stopped, there the the minimal is is a hundred and fifty-five and those were involved in crimes. And how we treat officers, i- it's it's a theme in our police department. We promote this. Uh, we want to make sure that we are treating everybody equitably and fairly. Uh, and and with respect. So that starts with our hiring process to make sure that we're hiring. A diverse group of people that are representative of our community. We want to make sure that they are highly educated, both both in formal education and in training. And then, of course, that they have the maturity to to be peace officers. And that they also have the knowledge of the community, because every community is different. Every community requires different uh. Different performance and behavior aspects. So we want to make sure that the people that we are hiring for South Pasadena are truly representative. We also incorporate training during their time in the police department with procedural justice, implicit bias. Talk about our traffic stops and how they treat people and what could happen. And then we promote de-escalation as well. And then we follow that up with our policy, both legal, ethical and compassionate training for all. And then lastly, and and I touched on this a little bit, is what does the community expect? What kind of partnerships do we have? And a police department is only good as it is. The relationship it has with its with its community. And that's, we want to protect everyone's rights. And we want to be a partner with with our community. Uh, we cannot be uh successful without that partnership. And support and follow the rules, not only uh the law and the constitution. But what are the expectations, as I mentioned, of our community? What do they expect us to to, how do they expect us to perform? How do they expect us to treat people? And then we want to develop solutions with our community to help implement that. That is creating that partnership. And we want to, not only just for crime, but for also for quality of life issues. And as I mentioned, uh, community members, their non-crime crime needs, uh, that is a majority of the the uh calls for service that South Pasadena receives. It's really. The the, as I mentioned, the quality of life issues and the expectations that the community has. I mentioned, every community has a different expectation. So if we look to the larger cities. There's probably a lot less need for that quality of life concern uh in relationship as opposed to South Pasadena. So as I mentioned, i- it was just a quick and brief overview on the presentation, but I really wanted to get into. The questions that this commission had that you didn't get an opportunity to ask at the previous meeting. It was cut short. I know there was a lot going on with budget. But uh with the questions that you may or may not have, I also want to preface this is, this is really a two-pronged approach. So if we. It really, this report really complements or uh is meant to go along with our assessment that occurred uh the previous month. So I I'm open to answer any questions on both the assessment and this, because I believe they they are compatible and they they uh they feed off of each other. So with this and the assessment that there are living documents, they they're going to change as we progress and we move forward, we identify deficiencies or strengths. Uh, you know, there are some things that are on those documents that that may be of no value in in years to come. We want to be flexible and free to change that as the community changes as well. So I'm open to any questions. So, can it, Ms. LaRose, if you could just hold on till public comment and then um we'll we'll let you come up and speak during public comment? Absolutely, we will absolutely give you an opportunity. I I do want to point out, though, that as we look at South Pasadena, as you are thinking about your concerns, South Pasadena is typically a pass-through city. Uh, we have the two ten to the north, the ten freeway to the south. So a- as you all experience as residents of South Pasadena, traffic is uh not a fun topic in this community. So. Uh, there's a lot of people that traverse through the city that are not necessarily residents. I know there's been a lot of discussion over the past couple of years about the demographics of. Of those that come in contact with law enforcement, specifically South Pasadena. And and certain groups have compared them to the demographics of South Pasadena. Uh, I I believe that's that's a little bit of a misnomer in the sense that we can't really compare it. It's it's really apples to oranges when we're talking about. How many people traverse this city every day. Uh, just the other day, I. I I saw a thing on Huntington Drive that some some engineers were saying, there's about thirty thousand people that go on Huntington Drive every day. The last statistic I looked at, and this is back in two thousand fourteen, uh, Manager and Associates from Public Works. Estimated there are roughly about a hundred and eleven, a hundred and twenty thousand people that come through South Pasadena every day. Those aren't all residents. Those are a lot of people from outside the community. So if we're looking at demographics from outside the community, and and I'm not saying. This is, this is a correct or accurate way of doing it. I think it's just to give some sort of perspective on it. Is let's look at the demographics of Los Angeles County. So fifty percent of Los Angeles County, I think it was forty-nine point eight percent, was Hispanic. Obviously, there's a, there's a, there's a a large uh contingent of Hispanic people in Southern California. And if you look at South Pasadena statistics, forty-five percent of our stops are Hispanic. You look at our neighboring communities of Highland Park and El Sereno, predominantly Hispanic. Shows to to reason that more people that that we come in contact with on traffic stops are probably going to be Hispanic, those that are commuting. What what is concerning is if we only look at South Pasadena demographics and say, well, that's more than than we have in our community, therefore that must be our problem. I think we need to realize and and come back to. A bias is a specific and intentional act. If we're, and that's one of the reasons why we're collecting more data, because we want to see if are there patterns? Are there, are there indicators that in that would show that law enforcement or our officers are doing something either to skew those numbers one way or the other? If there are, then we need to address it. Is there training needs? Or is this happenstance? Are we out there doing what we're supposed to be doing and just by the nature of our community that's designed its location? Are we coming in contact with these people happenstance? And, you know, when we look at demographics and we're coming up with specifics, and that's why I.
And, you know, when we look at demographics and we're coming up with specifics, and that's why I say I don't think it's it's an absolute. I think it's something we look at, but it's not an absolute. And that is, if we're basing everything just off the demographics, that is assuming that everybody has an equal chance of coming in contact with law enforcement. So everybody from our youth to our seniors at all times of the day, all times of the night, you know, everything being a hundred percent equal. Well, I I think we all know that that is not the case because we can't have everything. There's, there are more people that commute during the day in South Pasadena. So different, different demographics that are going to work, different demographics that are coming from the freeways, from our neighboring cities. So I think just to base it all off of demographics, I think that's just one component of it. So as we, as we look at this, as we move forward, as we start monitoring our, we we just got our first year of data that we're looking at here, it's something that we'll keep in in mind and will continue to bring back to the commission and to the community and certainly to the council. And look and see, are we seeing a big change in those numbers? You know, are there anomalies? So there, there's a lot of questions and certainly when you have one year of data, I I don't really think that that is an accurate representation. We don't have anything to compare it with. What we do want to do is make sure that we're providing accurate data, complete data, and then building upon that. So. Mr. Cervantes.
Chief, what I found on that report that I found very disturbing was the percentages, the percentages of people being stopped. And and as you said, they're talking about the highest percentage of Hispanic people and then blacks and Asians. But what to me is so misleading in this report is the fact that they don't take, he doesn't take into account the fact that South Pasadena is almost a true fair for a whole bunch of cities around. And and if you see like, for instance, the one thing comes right into South Pasadena and folks want to go from east, from west to east on the mission. And also the Garfield is used like a complete through fear as well as Garfield, I mean, Huntington. So that, that, this report doesn't show, doesn't say the reading, just those numbers are disturbing. And especially when the press gets a hold of them and points out, I mean, without saying, actually, what they're saying is South Pasadena is a very racist city. But they do not take into account all these facts that actually what we are in the middle of a whole bunch of other cities that people drive across is not all or mostly South Pasadena residents or whoever who are detained. So that, to me, I found very disturbing that it presented a very unfair picture of South Pasadena and the police department based on percentages of the number of arrests or the number of stops or whatever. So I was wondering if you could point out to whoever is doing this on the way that it is not the intention of South Pasadena to arrest or to stop Hispanics or any minority, but rather what the circumstances involve that geographically we are in that particular area. So that, to me, I found very disturbing when I read it, when I saw it because the the internet went to great pains to publish this report, even though it was a twenty-twenty-two report. It it made it sound like it was done yesterday. And also, the newspapers took it upon themselves to say South Pasadena stands above and whatever. So to me, I do not like the idea to be identified as some town, you know, which one of those Florida towns that they would stop you to make money out of you for speeding. So I speed traps, so it's it's not a fair comparison. This is totally different things, but somehow we are in a bad spot as far as how this, which these reports are made out. And I believe it's very unfair to the city of South Pasadena.
And to your point, Chair, this is why we're having this discussion, so that we can have that honest and open dialogue. Talk about what the issues are, what the concerns are. And then on top of that, the police department has published these statistics. It's on our police department website. There is a a a table under Community Dashboard that anybody can go on the police department's website under Community Dashboard, click on it. It'll bring up our arrest data, our traffic stops for the last quarter. And there, it's an interactive dashboard so that members can click on it, they can find out more information. And then the police department, I'm certainly available, and then my staff is too, to answer any of the community questions so that we can, we can be transparent and we can work on these issues as a community together and come up with with a a collaborative effort in in policing fairly and and under the Constitution.
Thank you, Chief, for the for the presentation. I I had a question to Mr. Scales that I put to Mr. Scales at the at the joint meeting and and I was wondering if you could take a stab at it too. So he talked about reasonable suspicion stops or Terry stops. And and the question I asked him was, the the case law, if you finish the sentence, it's reasonable stop based on articulable facts. And and the question that I put to him was, are the articulable facts recorded or or taken down anywhere? And he said they're not on the dashboard. But but my question to you, Chief, is are are they written in a report anywhere? Or or when we indicate that it was a reasonable suspicion stop? How are we keeping track of that?
So they would either be documented on a citation, they would be documented in a report, or they'd be documented in our CAD and RMS, which is our records management system. So at some point, and and of course, it depends on the severity of the stop. Does it lead to an arrest? Is it a documentation? Or is it simply a warning? The the level of detail changes depending on, but at 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 minimum, something is documented to indicate why the vehicle stopped or why a person is stopped. What what is the reason for that contact?
But that is not publicly available information, right?
Correct.
And on the on the pie chart, we also mentioned equipment stops. Could you explain that to us, please?
Equipment stops would be non-moving violations such as headlights, taillights, maybe no license plates, something of that nature that is a vehicle equipment malfunction, other than something that is a moving violation such as speeding or something to the action of that driver is is committing a violation, something related to that vehicle. I think a another misnomer is that people, people tend to associate moving violations as dangerous and equipment violations as non-dangerous. And and they're actually synonymous because if we look at someone driving without headlights, that's still a danger. If we have someone that's not driving with taillights, that's a danger. If someone's driving without license plates, in and of itself, it might be an accident. It might, they might have forgotten, it might have fallen off. Or it could simply be to hide a criminal element that they're trying to hide their identification. They're trying to hide their vehicle's identification. So there's a number of things that can that that fall into that. But I don't like the idea of trying to separate, well, this is dangerous or this isn't. I think they're all important. That's that's why they're lost. They're they're all critical to law enforcement. So just to touch on.
No, definitely agree. Driving behind someone without brake lights is is for sure dangerous. The the staff report mentions an increased cost for police strategies contract for a community presentation. Is that the joint meeting that already occurred or is that a separate event?
That was the joint meeting that already occurred.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing. We talked about the margin for error in not being able to verify certain characteristics of a person. And you mentioned that the the statute does not allow verification. Is that right?
Correct.
Does it allow or is there any benefit in exploring training the the officers on certain identifying characteristics to to try to be a little bit more accurate?
They have gone through data or training related to the RIPA process. I'm not sure, I I would have to look. I don't know how you would. And and this may be challenging in in today's culture of how you would identify certain characteristics that someone may identify as. In and of that, of itself, I I think that may be problematic to to indicate that someone is, did you have something?
Well, finish.
I think it might be problematic to say that someone identifies as this based on these characteristics. It may be challenging.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion though? Because I I think it's, I think it's really the reverse that's the issue, right? It's the problem is the unconscious bias that might exist that might lead to a false identification of somebody by perception. So to me, when when I hear something like that, it sounds like it would probably be beneficial to hear kind of what the unconscious bias types of training, sensitivity training, the the things that that help prevent sort of prior, you know, biases from influencing what how their identification perceptions are being implemented and used and reported. So I guess that that, maybe you can address that. I don't know if that answers your question, but I think that's, I'd like to hear.
Yeah, that helps. Thank you, Commissioner.
So in looking at what what training the officers receive, there's a, there's a number of implicit bias, bias-related training that the officers go through. One, I'll just start from down the list that I can go off the top of my head is the Simon Wiesenthal, the trying to think of what the name of it is. The center in Los Angeles does, thank you, the Museum of Tolerance. We've been doing that, the the police department here in South Pasadena specifically for about the last ten years. And even though it is, it is presented by one group, it is, it is approved by the state in terms of training bias and implicit bias, identifying what those are, identifying challenges that that different demographics may go through. And that is not just based on race or religion or sexual orientation, but by disabilities or any number of differences that an individual may have. We also go through state training that is provided by the Peace Officer Standards and Training. There are multiple classes that go along with that. And in addition to that, we go out and attend community-based trainings with either faith-based groups, NGOs. There's, there's a number of different trainings that the officers go through. Now, while including mental health training, and some of the mental health training does identify certain patterns that may lead to identifying someone with mental health or cognitive issues. Now, in terms of of what someone may or may not identify as, that is not something that we specifically focus on. Obviously, as I was trying to say, and not so eloquently, is that there may be some issues with that. What we do is rely on on the other trainings to the implicit bias and to not categorize someone specifically based on their looks or their appearances or their banners as as a specific group. So, but it is done based off what the officer perceives that that individual looks like on first, first initial glance, you know, what gender is this person? He perceives or she perceives this person to be this. And and they leave it at that. We don't explore that anymore. But what we do look at later are the patterns there. Is there a specific pattern with a specific officer? Or or is it with the entire agency? And then if, what where our goal is, as I mentioned, we only have one year's worth of data, is are we seeing trends that aren't, that aren't explainable? Is is there a trend that is an anomaly for South Pasadena that doesn't make sense? Can we not, can we not justify it? And and I hate to use that word justify, but justify it either statistically or or with hard data to support what we're seeing. So in in a nutshell, I hope that answered your question or clarified it.
Thank you.
Bob, unfortunately, we did not have enough time at that meeting, but I I did take note that Bob Scales, who presented the, at the thing, has, I think he's been monitoring the Seattle Police Department's consent decree for twelve years now. It's been going on since twenty-eleven, no end in sight. But there were a couple of points that he made regarding the RIPA program that we didn't have the time to explore. One of them was, is that like many of these things, consent decrees or RIPA, it's based on the officer's perception. And he made the point that it's almost impossible give any profession, but particularly in in policing, to get into the head of a police officer who's making a traffic stop, which most of the the stops in the city of South Pasadena are traffic stops, get into their head when they are able to observe a vehicle for a few seconds or less than a minute before making a stop to determine the racial makeup of the person driving the vehicle. So he said that report is fundamentally flawed because it's based on perceptions. And secondly, the RIPA report does not take into account the demographic, demographic makeup of who is committing the crimes in a particular area. So for, for example, they gave an example, South Pasadena, if you have male Hispanics that are committing the majority of violent crime or crime in that community, it would be foolish to be stopping female Asians. And he was trying to make that point. So you're right, we do need more time for the data from this program, the the dashboard of South Pasadena. But towards the end of the presentation, Councilwoman Braun addressed the point that when she looked at the RIPA report in the state of California, the thousand-plus complaints for racial bias or biased policing, she made the point that in the entire state, only nine were sustained, meaning nine incidents where officers were found to be guilty of biased policing. Now, in a state size of California, with seventy-five thousand-plus police officers, nine sustained complaints is almost statistically insignificant. So I think the points that Bob Scale was making need to be further examined. Like you said, in the city of South Pasadena with pass-through, and if you, the police officers in this city, know that a particular demographic is committing the majority of the crime, then it stands the reason that those are the people that potentially they may be stopping because they're using their experience, their background and their training to determine who should be stopped based upon the data that they have that the public does not have, at large does not have. But you're right, you can't just look at numbers of who is being stopped. You have to look at why the police officer is stopping because they're using all the information available to them that the public at large just does not have. So I think that's something we need to give this dashboard more time. And then we have to educate the people in the community as to why the police officer is doing what they're doing.
And you you raise a good point, and something that comes to mind is that's also why we have the ride-along programs. And and I certainly extend that opportunity to all of the commissioners, to our, to our members of our public, is to come on a ride-along with the police officers. You know, you don't have to go through the entire day, but it does give you a, as as close of a look into the, to the life of a police officer during their workday as as possible. And it is very challenging at times to see a speeding car or or any car driving by you and to, within the, within a few seconds of a glimpse, is to determine what race, what orientation, what, what this or what that of that individual, you're really looking for the violation, you're looking for certain things. But to get all that information as the car is passing by is is pretty challenging and realistically impossible. But to to the commissioner's point is, you know, this information is so new and is very limited. and is very limited at that, and it is based on perception. So as we're looking, even the state now is talking about going back and there are legislators that are lobbying to change this, to adapt to some of the new challenges that we've found as we started implementing this. I mean, while the intent was meant to to identify one thing, I think there are a number of challenges that were identified and maybe some some processes that weren't entirely accurate or could be improved. So as we move forward in the next couple of years, I would certainly expect RIPA and the law to change quite significantly. I think no matter which side of the aisle you're on, whether it's legislative or social justice or whatever, I think everybody is identifying that certain aspects of the program need to be modified. So and as I mentioned, South Pasadena, for us, this is a living document. We're continuously, continuously examining it. And as we move forward, I completely expect us to change the data points that we collect and to expand on it and to look at you know, different lenses, how we view this, not only as the Police Department, but as our Public Safety Commission, but then our community as well. You know, it's all a process. So hopefully, the information we glean from it is is reaffirming to some and then an opportunity to expand our training and our awareness for others. So I think it's certainly in its infancy stages, but it could hold some value certainly as we move forward.
Thank you, Chief, for the explanation. I fully agree that we have the data. This is just a starting point. We did a more comprehensive analysis. What's the, how can we interpret the data? How can we interpret it from our, from the police team point of view instead against other views, right, presented to the public in a more easy to understand way? Most people, I have a science background, so I can more see the data more deeper, categorize more different layers. I think most of the general public may not see through that many targeted presentation. Maybe police team can present your own interpretation in a report instead of you presenting to us in Word, in verbal format. Then more people will understand the data better. Along the way, we have more data, we'll get more convincing results.
Yeah, I agree. The more we talk, and that's really the point of bringing this topic back. Not only, I don't think we got enough time to explore it at the joint meeting, but is really to create that dialogue so that we can ask the important questions, then have an opportunity to really expand on it. But as you mentioned, we want to look at this data and it's very limited in its capacity right now. So as we collect more data and we can, not only can I look at it and my staff look at it and we can internally review it, but then I've also looked at the opportunity for bringing an outside entity, maybe USC. The USC graduate program did a report on the Police Department and its diversity last year, but bringing in an outside group to evaluate the data as well. I think there's value in that. I think there's value in having the community be a part of that. You know, there's nothing that we do that is secret in terms of our stops and the actions of the Police Department. Minus, you know, an investigation or something of that nature, but for the most part, everything we do, you know, we work for the public. We talked about that, that relationship with the community, and this is part of it. I hate to use the word transparency because I think it's overused. But at the same token, we want to be forthwith with all the information we have. So.
Thank you, Chief. You've been very thoughtful and thoughtful and especially patient with all these questions that go around in circles. But I really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Chair Servantes?
We have one public comment?
Yes, we have a public comment for agenda item number three, Yvonne LaRose.
Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
I am so impressed with our fire and our police departments. They're my heroes. And I'll bring the bribery to you, you know, later today. The Fire Department, folks already know that my survival skills are humor in the form of sarcasm and irony. And so please take some of the off comments with a grain of salt. But going back to the police report and the assessment. I have been reading and I have, because of my perceived identity, I have been experiencing all types of things that are impacted by the report. I've let's see, I guess it was in 2022. I began working with Lieutenant Robledo with regard to police performance. And we came to an agreement that what I was seeing or experiencing with regard to performance of officers, I would report to him. But included in the report would be recommendations for improvement or adjustments in behavior. And Commissioner help me, Saraf, Al-Saraf, mentioned the unconscious bias, even in the books that I have been reading. One stellar piece is sundown towns by James Lowen. There are cities that are still sundown towns. And in South Pasadena, that mentality still exists because, God bless me, because it's just the way it's always been done. Literally. From the speakers of those interviewed and from those who are in this community. Fortunately, I have been, in the time that I've returned to South Pasadena and even between 81 and 90, when I, while I was here and then left to go to law school. The mentality of, oh, she's our neighbor. We need to treat her with just as much respect as we do everybody else. Invite her over for the whatever. But the mentality, my first Chamber of Commerce mixer. I was told that I didn't belong in the city and was given a shopping list of why not. Allow me a little more. But with working with Lieutenant, he uses the information to leverage the training for the officers. I have had a few incidents that were quite negative. But I can tell by the next time I experienced, encountered those same officers, there had been some training done and some adjustments so that there was improvement. Thank you for having Robledo and for listening to the feedback. I want to see these improvements continue. When I ran for school board in 1989, I received threats if I stayed in the race. And those were actualized even to this year. However, I have seen an increasing number of people who are not people of color who come to me and extend all manner of courtesies and forms of acceptance and inclusion. And I want to see that trend continue to grow. Thank you.
All right. So going on to the next item, the minutes for the Public Safety Commission regular meeting of March 11, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion approved. Could you do a roll call on that, please?
Chair Servantes?
Approve.
Vice Chair Munoz?
Approve.
Commissioner Al-Saraf?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Donnelly? Commissioner G? Commissioner Holgim?
Aye.
Commissioner Liu?
Approve.
Motion passes.
Moving on to, moving on to information reports, there are no items at this time. And we'll go to the next item, number five, City Council Liaison Communications. I don't believe the liaison is present. Let's go to next item, and that is number seven, City Council Liaison. Let's go to the communications for the commissions. Do you have any comments to make at this time?
Do you want to do staff?
Chair Servantes?
Commission? Sorry, staff communications first or?
We need to move on to staff liaison communication.
I just have one quick update. I'm sure you've heard. If you have not, so I officially announced my retirement August 1st. I bring that up just to say that the city will be working on a recruitment to find a replacement and my commitment to the city manager and to the city is that I will be step in step in that process and keep this commission apprised of who my replacement will be eventually. But we have a good succession plan in place and I don't think the department's going to miss a beat. So we'll keep you informed as the couple of months go forward and we see who the replacement is going to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I hear retirement's overrated. I'm just one day.
It runs.
I don't think he believes me. I just wanted to announce that we're having a badge pinning ceremony this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in the Fire Department Bay. It's a public safety badge pinning. So the Fire Department's bringing on a number of new firemen and women. And then, of course, the Police Department is going to be bringing on a police officer and a deputy chief. So obvious members of the public are invited and certainly this commission. We hope that you can make it and look forward to seeing you there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Where is this going to be? Where is the ceremony going to be?
Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in the Fire Department Bay.
Oh, the Fire Department. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Servantes, Commissioner G has her hand raised.
I am deeply saddened by the loss of Chief Riddle, but your presence will be sorely missed. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who spoke today. I learned a lot.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any comments from the commissioners at this point?
I just have a couple. Thank you, Chair. And I want to extend my thanks to Chief Riddle publicly as well. One item I have is with respect to Marengo, the Marengo Elementary School. Chief, I don't know if this, if anybody sort of brought this to attention. This may be a public works issue in addition to a safety issue, but there's a crosswalk at I think it's Rollin and Marengo, which is, I think, one of the only, at least on Marengo, one of the only unprotected crosswalks in terms of not having stop signs on it. And I've seen and heard a variety of reports that it's fairly dangerous for folks crossing. There's a crossing guard who is doing the best that she can, but I think she's hampered by that in part because the drop-off driveway, the drive-through drop-off begins right there and you've got parents sort of racing to drop their kids off with their cars. So I would ask if some attention could be paid to what measures may be taken to make that a more safe crosswalk for folks? Whether that's looking at maybe putting in stop signs or more of the sort of light-up crosswalk gear or whatever can be done. But I think it's a fairly dangerous one and I think it's something that we're looking at.
If I may address that real quick. So the Police Department's taken additional steps. We've received some feedback from some of the parents there. We've had our parking control officers down there on the backside of Marengo. I know we're focusing on that. As to the crosswalk itself, which is more of an engineering issue, one is I will pass that on to the M-Tech Commission who looks at the engineering. But additionally, I know there is a project going on right now that's looking at the redesign of Marengo. But I'll include that too and provide that information to the Public Works Director so that he can address that.
Perfect. Thank you. Another thing that's probably within your purview is there's a I've heard some recent feedback. There's a at the corner of Fair Oaks and Spruce, there's a new development of four units, which has been in progress for years now, I think probably three or four years. And recently, people have seen folks going in and out of there at odd hours of the night, potentially squatters, the doors, you'd see them open, that kind of thing. And so and more recently, there's been some activity. People have seen on their Ring cameras a couple neighbors down of people coming up at odd hours as well. So I would ask if you could, unless that's been reported already, maybe some attention could be given as well.
That's the first I've heard of it, but happy to add that to extra patrol. And then for any other commissioners or people that are watching, if you hear or see anything suspicious like that, please call the Police Department right away. We're happy to go out there and look at it, investigate, make sure that everyone's doing what they should be doing. But perfect, absolutely happy to add that.
Peace. If I can follow up, I walked my dog by there. That construction is, it starts and it stops and it starts and it stops. And given what we've seen all over the country with squatters, that place is rife, ripe for the guys to be moving in there, bad elements going in there. So I second that. That doesn't look like it's ever going to be finished.
It seems that way. Yeah, for sure. And the last thing I would say is, and I haven't had a chance to let folks know, but I've missed the past couple of meetings. It's been a bit of a challenge with my schedule and sort of things that are on my plate. So this is probably going to be my last meeting. I want to say thank you to Chair, to the Commission, to the Chief and to everybody else, staff for all the great work that you guys are doing. And I will be tendering my resignation and wish you all good luck. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, just again extend our thanks to Chief Riddle and his his 33 years of service. I know he'll definitely be missed, but we look forward to working with his replacement.
Yeah, same here. I want to express my thanks to Chief Paul Riddle for his long service. He has been a role model, an icon in the community. And I saw him so many times everywhere. Yeah, it will be missed. Thank you.
Yes, one in a little. And I want to extend my thanks especially for him to be such an approachable person and always being so personable and so receptive to anything you said to him. He will be sorely missed. Thank you, Chief Riddle. Okay, we thank Commissioner Al-Saraf for his service. And at this time, I would like to, with no further items or comments from staff, I will adjourn the meeting at this time and it's on 10:25 Monday, May 13. Thank you.